Mr. Mayor, Peter is going to be on Zoom.
All right.
Yeah.
You believe that? He's probably one of those.
Yes, he's in love with her. He didn't want to.
I love the dishes.
Nobody signed it. All right. I'm using this little corner.
Fine.
I'll take the highest paper. For rent.
For my face. Yes. They're like to spread out.
I don't care.
I'm not being there. It's an important guy.
That was why we were there.
Well, of course, you must be talking to my husband.
Last time you told me, your husband said he doesn't know you. If we did that turned off.
As a couple of these tapes, I can sleep when I'm not within. He talks a different game when he faces things. Yeah.
Let's have a discussion. He must be really.
We good now?
Yeah, I turned the ding dong.
Is the recording recording?
Not yet, no, but Christie's gonna start that here in a second.
Recording in progress.
There we go.
Okay. He doesn't know you at all.
All right. March 6th, 2024 City Council Meeting of Mount Paul to Order. Are there any conflicts of interest?
Not for me.
No. Okay. The hearing disclosure statement. We're moving right into public hearing on the application by the owner for zoning text amendment regarding the R2 medium density residential zone. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties to the application and must provide their name and full mailing address if they wish to be notified of the decision, continuances, appeals, or other procedural actions required by the code. The city zoning code specifies applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. These criteria and findings of fact are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to those criteria and findings of fact or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes apply to the proposed land use action. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body and parties to the hearing an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes precludes appeal to the city council for the land use part of appeals or to see damages in circuit court due to a conditional, a condition of approval. Before the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may ask the planning commission or the city council for an opportunity to present additional relevant evidence or testimony that is within the scope of the hearing. The hearing's body shall grant the request by scheduling a date to finish the hearing, a continuance, to a time and date certain, or by leaving the record open for additional evidence or testimony. God, darn. I now hereby open the hearing. Do any of you need to declare a conflict of interest in this hearing?
No.
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 I know what I'm doing.
Or per, okay. Personal bias. So you don't have any personal bias.
Absolutely not.
Okay. As the audience, are there any challenges to the council's ability to make an impartial decision? Okay. Now, Garrett, we're gonna have the staff report. Is everyone? Do you feel it's necessary to have this full staff report or a summary of the staff report?
I vote for summary.
Summary? Summary? President summary?
Sure.
Garrett, can you summarize the staff report for us?
Yes. Please let me know if you can't hear me or have trouble hearing me. All right, so this is a zoning text amendment proposal pertaining to the Drift Haven Inn. It's in the R2 zone currently, the medium density residential zone. In the medium density residential zone, hotels are not a permitted use, and they're not, they're also not listed as a conditional use. Because the Drift Haven Inn has been there for as long as it has, it's considered a non-conforming use. The idea is that it can continue in its present form. Even though it's not, even though somebody couldn't come in and get a permit for a new hotel in the R2 zone. So the applicant has identified in their report some reasons that they would like to make the hotel use at least conditionally permitted in the R2 zone. And we'll get into those during the hearing. But what they're basically proposing is to change the list of uses that is conditionally permitted to include hotels established before a certain date that effectively limits the effect of the amendment to just being the Drift Haven Inn. So the Drift Haven Inn would become a use that is conditionally permitted in its current form. And any changes in the future in terms of building expansions, more hotel rooms, things of that nature. A new conditional use permit with a hearing before the planning commission would be required. So this decision is a zoning text amendment. It's the city council's decision to make. The planning commission had a hearing on it on February 8th after public notice was issued, according to the zoning code. And no one other than the applicant and their representatives testified during the hearing, and we didn't receive any written comments from the public either. At the end of that February 8th hearing, planning commission recommended that city council approve the zoning text amendment. There's basically two criteria for deciding on this. One is that the proposal should be consistent with the comprehensive plan. The staff report, in the process of writing the staff report, we went through the comprehensive plan. And you'll see that, you know, we made findings to the effect that the proposal is consistent with the plan. For the most part, the plan doesn't speak to the situation. And then the second criteria is that the proposal is supposed to serve a public need. And the staff report discusses that in a couple of different ways. One is that the non-conforming use status that the Drift Haven Inn currently has places it at some extra risk of not being able to continue in the future. For example, if they had a some event like a fire and weren't able to rebuild for a couple of years, they would not be able to rebuild as a, as a hotel with their non-conforming use status. Okay, so that's one of the kinds of things that the staff report talks about. Another that the applicant identified is that as the hotel owners continue to try to upkeep the property and maintain it and make improvements, financing is, the people that offer financing for commercial properties definitely question whether they should finance projects that are on properties with non-conforming use status. So that's one, one way in which this serves a public need is basically it's needed for the Drift Haven Inn to assure that they can continue into the future. And the public interest in that is that they provide a service in some cases to residents or visitors who are coming to see residents of the city of Gerhardt. They add to the city's tax base, provide hotel occupancy tax, bring visitors to the central city that spends some money and otherwise contribute to the city of Gerhardt. The second way that this serves a public interest is that it establishes some clear expectations for the future about what kinds of things are allowed at the Drift Haven Inn site without getting further approvals through the planning commission. So if this is approved, then basically going forward, the applicant and the city will be able to clearly understand each other that if any expansion or change of use occurs, again, more hotel rooms, bigger hotel rooms that expand the footprint of buildings, adding additional accessory uses to the existing hotel use. All of these things would require a new hearing before the planning commission and give the city some just some, you know, some extra say in making sure that what happens at this site in the future, which again is in the R2 zone, a residential zone, is consistent with the code and the comprehensive plan. So those are the ways that the staff report summarizes that the proposal serves a public need. And with that being said, again, the planning commission recommended approval. If city council also approves the zoning text amendment, we would prepare an ordinance for a later city council meeting and bring that back for the final approval of the ordinance amending the zoning code. I'm gonna leave it at that, and I'm here to answer questions, and Peter, of course, is here as well. And Peter Watts, so thank you.
Thank you, Garrett. All right. Now we'll go to the applicant's report. And would you like to present it? I don't, I'm not sure.
Yes, please.
You are?
Yeah, come on.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Great start. Sure. My name is Matt Cole. Address is 415 Northwest 11th, Portland, Oregon 97209. I'm part of the investor group that bought the hotel a little over two and a half years ago. We've invested a significant amount of money in the hotel in repositioning it and refurbishing the rooms. And our primary reason for coming in to you and asking for this is that we want to maintain the hotel the way it is. And this allows us to ensure that we can maintain the whole hotel the way it is. It also allows us to get a loan on the property to pay back our investors. To this point, we funded the venture entirely through cash, and we would like to be able to offer some of our investors some of their money back. And we're proud of what we've done at the Drift Haven. We want to keep it as part of this community, and we appreciate you considering our request.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm Brian Veracchioni. I'm a planner at Mackenzie in Portland. Our address is 1515 Southeast Water Avenue in Portland. And so I was the planner that helped prepare the application before you tonight. I want to thank Garrett for a fine staff report and a good summary of the issues before you this evening. I did want to point out a couple of things that we ran through with staff before getting to you this evening. A couple of other ways that we contemplated potentially helping resolve the concerns about financing and stuff. One would be to outright permit hotels in the R2 zone, but that felt kind of risky because suddenly you could find yourself with hotels all over the place in the R2 zone, and that didn't seem appropriate. The other would be to rezone it to a zone that does allow hotels. But the problem with a rezone is there's no guarantee that you'll get the use that you think you might get because once it's got that zone, anything on the list, it's allowed, and again, you might have a surprise on your hands. So we're, the ownership asked us to try to find a way to make sure that this is beneficial to the ownership for financing and reconstruction reasons, but doesn't have negative effects on the city. So that's why we've come up with basically the category is hotels can be conditionally permitted in the R2 zone if they've been there long enough. Staff gave us a list of all the hotels in the city, and it it just so happens that only this one hotel falls into that category. So that's our attempt to keep the city the way it is and benefit the hotel as well.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions. For the applicant team, we also have an attorney for the owners on Zoom if there's any legal questions that come up.
Can I say something? This, this place was built by the T-bergs. Okay. It goes back to the 40s. It's been there. I think this is more of a housekeeping. I view it as more of a housekeeping issue as far as the sound.
I'm sure it is because when they changed in 94 the zone, they should have made an exception at that point. You know, it's
They wrote the comparison plan, they should have.
It's just the way it is with Gerhardt and what they do in the past, what they've done in the past. Okay, anyone else got a question? No?
I do.
Then?
Thank you. Do you plan on expanding the facilities at all in the near future, making it larger in a way?
Not currently, no.
Okay. That's it.
Are you planning on increasing the height? Taking down one side and to get to in this? Instead of the one year eliminates the possibility of the non-conforming use. And now that you're going to be conforming, you could tear down half of it and put parking underneath, real parking, and put buildings up above. I mean, my question really stems to, I don't want to see a three-story building in downtown Gerhardt. You know, it's just, that would be like, here's my thumbs. So
We have no plans to do that. I mean, obviously, the site is limited by our septic
Right.
system and the capacity, and we're fairly close to capacity as it is. The numbers would not work to build any sort of structure and go up and have structured parking there and have the hotel penciled in anyway.
Okay. Any other questions for these gentlemen?
So just to be clear, if you reached the place where you wanted to do, make some changes like that, that would have to go through the planning commission and get both there and ROK before they could do that?
I believe so. Peter, is that true? We'd have to have a hearing at the planning commission level and then our level of conforming use?
That's, that's correct, and this is written, we couldn't, I couldn't think of a way to write this more narrowly. And the, the standard is such that you would be able to say no to just about anything that you didn't think was palatable. It is a conditional use. The findings that we would make would just, would allow you to say no. It does give them the opportunity to ask. But yeah, there's a, this, this does very little. It does make them a conditional use under the current zoning so they can get financing. And I independently checked with someone pretty high up in the lending field, and they told me it would be very difficult to get, that a lender wouldn't rec, basically recognize the pre-existing non-conforming use. It would be, is it allowed? And it's not allowed. So that, that all checked out. And then the legal standard to allow you to say no is, it's pretty broad. So I, I would not be terribly concerned. If they bring something in that's palatable to the planning commission and city council, we could allow it with this change. If they bring in something you don't like, you could say no.
Okay, thank you very much.
I was already had conditional uses are a planning commission decision that could be appealed to city council. So when they need to get a plant, a conditional use, it would be a planning commission decision.
Okay. And only, only the council if it was appealed.
But any other questions?
Whoa, no, kind of ask for me. So who would be appealing?
Anybody within the neighborhood that might disagree with the decision or somebody else who was involved would appeal the decision for a conditional use potentially.
Any party at the hearing that testified in writing or in person would have the ability to appeal it to the city council, and then it would start anew. And then those people would have, if you guys approved, and they didn't like it, they could take it to Luba. So it would be like anything else.
But the initial conditional use process lies with the, lies with the planning commission, and it would not come to the city council unless it was appealed.
Okay. I have one other question for you. This doesn't really have anything to do with anything, but I'm just kind of curious. You guys did a lovely job of putting in all the irrigation to the south and putting in lawn, and I'm just wondering, what, what are you doing with it?
We have no plans right now. Again, we're limited by the septic as well. So as of right now, we're going to continue to keep it as a green space and the lawn for now.
Anybody else?
I have a question, but it's for Chad. Chad, have there been any complaints from the neighbors around the Drift Haven about any problems with traffic or noise or anything that we should know about?
No, not that I can think of.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Any proponents wishing to speak at this time?
Thank you.
Okay. I would say you're dismissed. Okay, are there any opponents wishing to speak at this time? Are there any neutral comments? People who want to make them at this time? No applicants rebuttal since no one spoke. I am going to close the hearing. Now we can discuss. If everyone's in a agreement, you can make a motion. But if you want to discuss that you have a point to want to make, we can discuss.
I'll make, I'll make a motion. We approve this. The motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we had a first and a second. All those wishing to, there's no discussion because we've already gone through that. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Congratulations, gentlemen. Now, I guess we're going to adjourn the hearing. This hearing is now adjourned. And what do we have? Thirty-eight minutes?
It does say on the top of the posting that we did for this, this is tonight's council meeting against a 6:00 PM public hearing, regular civic business immediately follows. So that's how we noticed the meeting today. It didn't get on the top of the agenda that was delivered out, but it did get out on the posting. So you have your, your options there.
Okay, well, if that's the case, and that is a a posting that somehow didn't get put on our agenda, I'm going to move to open the city council meeting, March 6th, 2024. And I'll ask for a declaration of conflict of interest again, just to be on the right side of life. Anyone have a conflict?
No.
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 Okay, great. So gentlemen, if you want, feel free to debate.
Brian's gonna stay. I'm gonna stay. Go to the direction. I hear that's nice place, isn't it? I'm the only one there tonight. It's all.
He's gonna have a party.
All right. Approval of minutes.
I have one comment here if possible on the minutes.
Okay. Just standing, please.
On the pillar meeting February 7th, there is a, should be a correction. Of the councillor's report. There is a section at the very bottom of page one, councillor rule, that is the repeat, it shouldn't be again, it should be deleted.
So we cross that out?
Correct.
Which is about the employee.
It was probably.
So, starting off with now we see. January 30th. Work session. Any corrections? Motion?
I'll give you a motion to approve the minutes from the work session of the city council on Tuesday, January 30th, 2020. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye, it passes. All right. Regular meeting of the city council, Wednesday, February 7th, 7 o'clock. Any corrections besides just names?
I have one.
When?
Page three. Bottom of the city administrator section. Says councillor Buckford did reiterate, planning commission had a public meeting on the issue. The rest of that sentence isn't quite right. I think maybe it's supposed to be that the intent was never to tell people that they could not remove a tree.
We don't page three of this.
Yeah, great.
Okay, where you said?
Yeah.
Awesome.
It just got a little
Okay. Any fix it?
Well, my fix is already just.
Anyone else with a correction? All right, a motion with correction?
I move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the city council, Wednesday, February 7th, 2024, as amended.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Moving on to the work session of the state league council for Tuesday, February 13th, 2024. Are there any corrections? Any discussion? Motion?
We'll make a motion that we approved the minutes from the work session of the city council from Tuesday, February 13th, 2024.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. It passes. Special meeting on Wednesday, February 28th. Are there any corrections? Oh, there was something. At the pocket says 7:00 PM online, and it actually started at 6:00 PM. All right. Motion?
We'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for the special meeting of the city council on Wednesday, February 28th, 2024, with the amendments we just discussed.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, it passes. That's all done. Planning commission report, everyone has it in their packet. Is there any questions for Chad to answer? All right, moving on. Mayor's report. I was happy to have a lot of meetings last month, but I'm not going to report them because we just okayed all the Those that have got a lot of meetings last month, I'm not going to report them because we just okayed all the minutes to them. I did on Thursday go to Pacific Bridge Elementary School and met with four classes of fourth graders inviting them to participate in, if I were mayor, poster contest, which we hope will get a few entries. Last year there were twenty-seven and uh I can't tell you about all the other meetings because I just go on in my mind when I um start talking. Anyway, that's my report. Council reports. I'm gonna start with Dana.
Okay, um, so this is something that I should have addressed last month, but I didn't because um well, it was it was kind of new. Um, it was still a little little raw and I wasn't I wasn't sure I wanted to, but um since then some things have come up. Um, and I think it's pertinent to discussions that are going on in our community. So um on at two A M. On January thirtieth of this year, um my thirty-year-old son and his girlfriend were in their basement apartment in a house up on Body Street in Astoria when they heard some noise going up on upstairs. Um, the noise persisted, it got louder. And eventually they discovered that um the house above them was engulfed in flames. They grabbed the cat, nothing else. They ran out the door, had to hop over um a downed power line in order to get out safely. And uh the fire trucks showed up. Um, a lot of agencies showed up. Um, Astoria, of course, took the point on that, but um also I would like to point out that our department was there also. Um, Chief Como and Andy Parks, I also later learned that um Michael Bond and Rob Brooks were there. So this is important. One other thing that I wanted to mention about that is that my son called me immediately as it happened, knowing how these things go. I said, okay, well, you're the first shift. You stay there until they clear out. When you need some sleep, you go get some sleep and I'll come down there and sign all the documents, they can get in and do their investigations. So I went down there at eight o'clock in the morning. There were still firefighters there. I had come here to city hall for a meeting at, I don't know if it was ten thirty or eleven o'clock. But um sitting right next to me were uh Chief Como and Deputy Chief Andy Park still going strong right next to me, and I know they had to have been tired. Um, I later wrote a letter, not knowing everybody who had been there. Um, I wrote a letter to the Astoria Fire Department thanking them, and this is the response that I received from them. Thank you for taking this time to send us this email. I'm glad we were able to assist you and your family. Fighters are devastating and such a terrible life event to go through. We do our best to try and minimize its impacts. I'm so grateful for our amazing team of firefighters, not only in Astoria, but our entire county. We're working very well together. Our team in Astoria is small, but we do our best and sometimes it's the little things that count the most. I will make sure to share your message with the team. Have a great day, Astoria Fire Chief Brett Field. So again, I wanted to share that and and give a shout out to our firefighters that were there and again, my my gratitude because my son well, as you can imagine, whatever the smoke or the fire did, destroyed the water did, but with their help, we were able to at least get out his essentials. We later did find his cat and we also got a couple of um pieces of furniture out that had great sentimental value. I mean, the firefighters were there lining up and helping us haul things out. So that is the the value of our fire department. Um, so following on that, piggyback on that, um this last month has been kind of busy for me with personal things, but also gathering information about the needs assessment for the fire department, which we always promised would just be a prelim- preliminary informal thing. We are going to have a formal one done later. We've gotten some great feedback after some of the town halls. Um, one of the best pieces of advice that we've been given is to um talk more about the structural changes that we need and and why making some of the smaller changes that seem like, well, you should just go do those could trigger the need to then make greater A D A changes and much more expensive repairs to the building um than some people might might imagine. So that's going to be an ongoing thing and um we're going to still continue to gather, make sure we have some other questions that have been coming up that um I think we need to address before the needs assessment would be the preliminary needs assessment would be ready to go out to the public. So I ask that you be patient with me on that and we'll continue to work on that. Um, also follow up in our meeting last, in our work session, we talked about grants. Um, and I talked a little bit about the Senate bill forty-six ninety was the one that I couldn't remember the number of. It was introduced to the U S Senate in twenty twenty-two. It's currently collecting dust sitting there and it's probably not going to go anywhere. It was just a very partisan bill bill. Um. Then last year in um twenty twenty-three, S B nine seventy-seven, which is essentially a very simpler um bill was introduced. It's called the facilitating investments required for emergency services to all towns in our nation act. This was a, unlike the other bills that have been introduced, it both in the in uh Congress and in the Senate. This is a bipartisan introduced bill, um and it would provide grants for fire station construction through FEMA. Um, this now, it was introduced a year ago. It was moved to the Committee on Homeland Security and Governmental Affairs. And it is, they're languishing also collecting dust. Um, who knows if they will look at that again in a year like this when we have so many other things going on right into such an important election. I'm not super hopeful about it. The one thing that I am hopeful about is that this was not only a bipartisan introduced bill, but it was also introduced and supported by members of both Congress and Senate, which is um maybe someday. And one of the things that it said was that it wanted to offer money eventually if it's approved and this could take a couple of years to go through. Um, that twenty-five percent of the money that was set aside would be earmarked for volunteer departments. And then an additional twenty-five percent would be available for the other, all of the pools. They identified three different pools of of agencies that could apply for it. Like I said, one group was a volunteer and then there was one that was just open where all of the other agencies could apply. So we would have perhaps, if it's passed and if we have a viable project for public supports and money to match, that might be something we can look at in the future. Uh, talk with citizens about the tree removal ordinance that we've been discussing over the last couple of months. Um, talk with, that's state parks again. Um, Chad, I'm gonna let Chad Sweet talk about that. Um, he he's done some great work on that, but what we're trying to do is develop a response plan for July fourth this year would be be a little bit better uh prepared for or build on what we did last year. And then also I'm looking to sign up for the April second uh League Award of City Community Vision and Strategic Planning Training in Newport. It'll be just a day trip, so it won't cost the county or the city anything if I go all the way. Make it into a personal family vacation. It won't cost it. I'm not.
Sharon?
Okay, um. I met with Angelina from our um building departments. And she helped me get uh the maps, city maps um pulled up at at my home, which I wasn't able to do for the past three years. Uh, and I discovered, which I did not know, that um the A two zone, which is the aquatic zone, goes all the way up the Neocaxi to seven. I had no idea. So I've been um receiving information from a Gerhardt citizen who was looking very closely into the wetlands issue and the A two zone issue. Um, and discussing things back and forth with her. Uh, we're not ready to bring it to the city or to the rest of the citizenship, but we will. Um, second thing is um Channel Eight out of Portland, K G W, I think it is. Uh, came and interviewed myself as well as several other citizens in our area um about the elk situation. To my knowledge, uh, the segment is not aired yet. I tried to reach out to him so I could report to you when it would air and I did not hear back from him yet. Um, that would happen perhaps only two weeks ago. So, uh, and then lastly, um, I've been uh going back through every city council meeting that I've been uh city council uh part of uh and looking for things that kind of have fallen by the wayside. Yeah, this is actually a suggestion of uh some Gerhardt citizens, uh one of whom is sitting in our audience uh about having some type of a way to track things that um are discussed but not resolved or not adequately discussed. So I'm going back through it and making a list so we can see what hasn't been followed through with, uh and we'll try to move something along along those lines. That's all.
Thank you. Rita?
I have nothing.
All right. President?
I have nothing as well.
All right. Okay. Moving on, we have the police report. Um, we have the chief of fire chiefs report.
Yes.
I see here.
He is here. Let me, I'll grab him a quick.
Yeah. I don't know if he's here. I know his report is here. Pardon me? Yeah.
He's talking over here. Just a second.
I want to get uh Chief Gregory in the batter's box.
The what?
Chief Gregory.
And Chief Gregory is out. He's not able to get, he's asking things that he's got to take care of at home. He's got sick family and working on a new A V system. So he's in a weird.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Going from one meeting to the next. Uh, from there. So what I got for you guys tonight is our incidents and data stats for February for last month. There were the total of forty-seven calls, twenty-nine inside city limits, ten was in the district. We sent out eight eight times. Uh, three with the seaside, all three for building fires, four of them was warranted. Two fires, one M V A and one stayed in extra manpower helping with a a call and then went to Napa once for building fires from there. How that matches for last year? February of twenty-three had twenty-eight calls. And February ended on call eighty-two. When the February of twenty-four, last month, one call a hundred and twelve, so a thirty called ahead of last year.
Great. Any questions?
You were the chief.
Okay, you can go back to another meeting.
Go back to them. Thank you. You're gonna be great. Thanks a lot. Thank you, sir.
All right. Ask for another meeting.
Hey, so I kind of just took a comparison from February twenty twenty-three last year to February twenty twenty-four this year. And overall, our revenues are three point one percent higher and expenditures are six point three percent higher. Which the net difference translates to a favorable point six percent or about twenty-two thousand dollars compared to last year. So it's pretty good. At least we're in the positive. Uh, some interesting revenue highlights are Pacific Power franchise fees increased from last year to this year, twenty-two point one percent so far. Uh, marijuana tax decreased thirty-four point four percent. We still have enough order, so we'll see how that ends up panning out. And transient room tax stayed almost equal. It had only increased point three percent from last year. So those are some strong revenue sources for us and some just little statistics to throw out there for you. Today, the city's revenue streams are still on target to meet expenditures. This month, noteworthy revenues included the annual Northwest Natural Gas and Century Link franchise fees payments as well as a state uh portionment payment in Fund Forty-five, the state revenue sharing. In expenditures, uh there were payments in Fund Twenty for the city's annual debt service payment on our water construction bonds. So we have an interest payment um earlier in the year and then we have uh our big payment that's due in February. That's the end. Uh, and a payment in account thirty-three eighty-two to a sip with some programming requirements uh due to the implementation of our water rate change. So the tiered rate system, we had to work with Springbrook. Um, Christie and I, I think, had probably eleven meetings with them as we worked through um implementing those rate changes um and putting them in. So they had ran one cycle. And the final state revenue share grant payment to pass us. So all of our state revenue shares have been paid out to make the grand awards. Uh, C I S had their conference last week and unfortunately preliminary rate projections have been released for liability and health insurance plans. And it it looks like, um, as you might expect, everything is going to increase and maybe a little more than I would have liked to see. I would encourage council members, if they haven't already looked at this magazine, to look at this magazine. If you get this, this is a great resource and it has some really good articles in it this time um about things that are relevant right now. So I would recommend trying to find this email if you get this or let me know and I can forward it onto you. It's got some great articles in there.
Thank you, Justin. All right. Peter Watts, City Attorney.
So our, the Portland State Meeting with our population projections, which is critically important to us because it um establishes what our shared state funds will be. Um. Is tomorrow. Uh, the the, it's divided up into three days. I went to today's because I had um I had a city and other than the uh, other than the city that I was there for, which um, I feel like their projection was maybe a little bit low, but close to accurate. Uh, the other cities seemed very, very low, uh which, to give you an idea, between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty, and I had not known this. The city of North Plains grew by ninety-four percent, their population. And uh P S U has them over the next ten years at growing around twenty-five percent. And the the first real opportunity to get that updated um, if the numbers aren't accurate, will be in four years. So hopefully they'll, um, I have raised with them several times uh concerns about the accuracy of their last projections related to uh Clapton County, which will likely require us to get a whole new buildable lands inventory and housing needs analysis. Uh, and so I would, I would hope that um they've taken more time and care um and that and that we'll see accurate numbers. If we don't, um, and I think our staff's done a great job of getting them information. Uh, if we don't get accurate numbers, we'll probably want to talk to the other jurisdictions and and see what consider where our options might be because workforce housing is such an issue. Uh, I don't need to, I know I'm preaching to the choir here. But so the the meeting will be tomorrow. I'll be there. Um, and uh hopefully that will go, um, hopefully that'll go well and provide some opportunities. Uh, the, the main uh person that does a uh projections is uh Doctor um Hudda Al Kitkat. Uh, and she kind of does the first uh round and then there are two other PhDs that kind of look at the numbers as well. But I asked and and they do not look at the area within the, they don't look at the amount of urban growth boundary that cities have. Um, or or uh proximity to urban services like water, which I was shocked to hear. Anyway, so uh that's something that that I've been in touch with planning staff about and I know that they're watching it very closely as well. Uh, and I'll ha- we'll have a full report out um as soon as we get get that information. Uh, some of you may be aware, there's been some recent case law related to recreational immunity. Um, and there is an erosion of cities recreational immunity. We're going to be doing some signage around the city likely that you'll see that specifies that our paths are for uh exclusively for recreational use. And the reason for that is because a plaintiff in a case made a argument that while they were walking their dog and had a accident on a a city path, not our si- not our path fortunately. They were walking to recreate. The walking that they were doing to go to their walk to recreate, they argued was not recreating. Uh, so, I mean, whether someone thinks that their walk is recreating or not recreating, it's like purely subjective and I don't know how we could ever prove, uh, whether they were intending to recreate or not recreate when the activity is identical. But, um, the answer in the short term, unless the, uh, court, uh, unless the Supreme Court weighs in or the legislature changes the law, is just going to be more posting of signs and then if someone were to make that claim, we would argue that if they weren't recreating on our path, they were trespassing on our path, so. Um, that's how we will attempt to deal with it. I know I have a couple of agenda items on the regular agenda, so I'll, I'll wait on those unless we, we get, um, we get more questions, o- other than one thing that I'll mention. And, and it's kind of this erosion of our immunity, uh, during the ice storm that happened in, um, the Portland metro area. Uh, there were some people who had gotten, they had applied for tree cutting permits. Those permits were denied despite them having arborist reports, apparently, this is anecdotally, but I believe my source for it is very reliable. Those were denied, the trees fell down during the storm, crushing people's houses. Uh, and, and so I, I think that that could turn into a problem. Um, and I, I hope that, um, you know, we're gonna have to navigate those sort of issues as, as cases happen. But I just want to put that on your radar now. Um, because a couple of the cities are not particularly sympathetic. Um, in what they did is, as I understand it, and they are in counties where a jury would not be sympathetic to that city. And that's how, that's how law gets made that, that impacts the rest of us. So, um, hopefully, uh, hopefully we can maintain our sovereign immunity. Um, as, as best as we can, but, but, but those are a couple of legal issues that I see on the horizon. The, the final one is that both the House and the Senate have passed, uh, Governor Kotex housing um, bills. I, as I understand it, those have not been signed by the governor yet, but I would be surprised if they weren't. And so I think that, uh, there's some clarifications as far as UGV expansions as well as land swaps. Um, and, uh, I'll make sure to read, read the final versions of those and have a, a summary for you at our next council meeting. Assuming they get signed by the governor.
Thank you, Peter. All right. Chad?
Thank you, Mary.
And if you can't talk, that's all right, we can just skip you and have you talk the rest of the time.
I'm making it, it's really good. Uh, so I've got a couple of updates on the city administrative report, coenforcement's been going really well. Uh, my team in, uh, the planning department, uh, Garrett's assistant Angelina and my building code official, we've been really getting in front of some issues as they come up, solving those issues before they get to court. And, uh, that team is doing really well, we've, uh, resolved some business license issues, still working on one or two of those. We closed some illegal vegetation cases, we're opening up a few more of those and trying to be those taken care of, making sure that people are taking care of their vacant lots. Uh, and today came in an eight foot fence that was constructed, should be six foot, but the owner of the construction folks are working with us, so uh, we're getting that, uh, repaired. Uh, under Public Works was funds requested coming in for a skid steer unit, uh, sorry, it's not a skid steer unit, it's a skid unit that we're working on. A skid unit is a unit for, uh, our water treatment facility to actually clean and deliver our water to the residents of Gearhart. And we are looking at a project, uh, that would, eh, uh, enable us to do uh, more maintenance, more cleaning and potentially make more water as well, and so we'll be presenting that, uh, to you here upcoming soon. Uh, likely everything's coming together and we'll be discussing that again next month. Uh, the public works has also been very busy over the last week, we had a lot of rain. And that rain showed up in places that people weren't used to. We do have a lot of new people in town that weren't quite, uh, understanding of the flooding that can occur here occasionally. And we had some of that, uh, Buzz Campground, the, the backside of that did flood. Uh, we had flooding, we have flooding that's going on at our funnel system, that's down on the, uh, Pacific Way to the school. Um, and you've seen what's going on in the school. There's, our public works director and employees have gone up and down, followed all the uh, water flows, looking for beaver dams or other obstructions, but it just turns out this is a lot of rain. The aquifer, uh, recharge has come up and so the water is sitting in places where people aren't quite accustomed. So far, there hasn't been any major damage for anyone and we have ensured our systems are moving water as best that they can under the circumstances. But, uh, just be aware, when we get a lot of rain, that's going to be an issue that we're gonna have to work with. Uh, Fourth of July update, with, uh, Councilor Gold's assistance, we have a meeting with Oregon State Parks. We, the discussions have been around, uh, the Fourth of July, the impacts of the Fourth of July and how we can mitigate as many of those impacts as possible. This is a new meeting that we've been having, we haven't approached state parks before and we've had two meetings with them now. And of course, a lot of the issues that are coming out are availability of people, availability of funds and how they can help assist kind of keep things uh, more organized down on the beach, uh, especially when it comes to illegal fireworks, garbage, things like that. So I want to let the council know that we are meeting with them, but also along with that is, uh, Chief Como, Fire Chief Como. Uh, and I are talking to our local fire chiefs here, uh, on either side, Warren and Seaside. And the county, uh, the county emergency manager is in on this as well. We're gonna sit down and have some meetings and discuss the Fourth of July, uh, as it, uh, happens to our communities. What we can do, improve, but also to go through a process of actually setting up emergency operations centers for the Fourth of July. And better coordinate between all the fire departments, police departments, Oregon State Parks and the other responding units such as state police and the county. So those conversations are happening and the goal of those are to improve our, um, uh, our work in those areas, to improve, uh, getting ahead of the garbage, getting ahead of the, the illegal fireworks and making sure that we have enough people, uh, or more people anyway, to help assist in that program. So there'll be more to report, but, um, those things are happening. Uh, Monday, I just happened to go on the Great Streets Program website at ODOT, I know not many of you probably do, but I was pretty excited to do so. The Great Streets Program is part of our update on the highway project with all the ideas the council, the residents of Gearhart, the planning commission came up with for, uh, potentially redoing parts of the, um, the highway. On their website, so I've got good news and bad news. The good news is projects selected for the Great Street funding, Gearhart was number four of four. Uh, so, uh, three four, four out of four. Uh, they, they awarded to four different, uh, uh, projects, one was Portland North Lombard Street, one was, uh, three other communities, Hermiston and Gearhart, or two other communities of Hermiston, Gearhart Highway was sort of one of them being selected for funding. Well, that same day I got an email from the, uh, ODOT. And they said, yes, but unfortunately what we found is that there we had sixty five million dollars to do the project for three projects with the price increases, I'm now taking sixty four, so we were kicked off, uh, we were just close. So they fought for us, they tried to get us up a little bit higher, we scored, uh, four out of all of the, um, grants that were submitted. So I, this particular round, we're not eligible for. But the next round, I don't know when that is coming through, but I'll find out some more information like that, but I don't have a lot of information for you at this time, just finished.
Question, so I was just up and asked story and they, I don't know if you've been up there recently, but they restriped. So there's a center lane where there didn't use.
Yes.
Why can't we just at least do that?
That's similar to one of the ideas that we have and that was Chief, uh, Bowman's, uh, point of contention the entire time was why can't we just do something simple by moving the lines? ODOT made things sound a little bit more complicated than that, but they also want to, part of the funding for this is to redo the Pacific Way light and the access for EVA in the sidewalks of the Pacific Way site, so our project is more expensive than that, so they do have to go for more funding. Um, I'll be in touch with them, maybe you can assist me with that, we have some conversations, but.
I'll be happy to, who paid for the Astor, for Astoria, do you know?
No, I don't.
So they are outside also.
Well, even with or without sidewalks, we had different, uh, scenarios where we'd be with sidewalks, without sidewalks, uh, with more room for pedestrians and bikes, there was four or five different options that we had in there. This was rolled up for our project between Fifth Street and Pacific Way. Um, and I don't know exactly, uh, how that happened, but the funding, the costs are what is really taking the funding, um, for Loop here. Uh, where they were gonna do four projects at six million or sixty five million, they were only able to do three.
You know, but it just doesn't seem, and maybe I'm naive, it doesn't seem like restriking out here would cost them.
Yeah, things with the highway in ODOT can get more complicated, you know, we think sometimes. The other issue that we have on the highway, as you noticed and I talked about earlier, is flooding. There were some pretty serious problems on that highway this week. Uh, and last week it was dangerous and so that's something that they have to accomplish as well. And I think that brings the price up pretty, uh, pretty high. So I'll give you more information in a point more as you know. Uh, that is that, uh, it looks like, um, we talked about recreational immunity.
I have a question about.
That's what I had, this one, yes.
So we had talked at one point, this is one of our unfinished business things, about redoing the signage and making it all coherent in our city. So my question is, if we're gonna put these recreational signs up that Peter was talking about, are, are we waiting until we get the signage decided? Or are we putting them up immediately or?
We're, we're working on that now, we're gonna put them up sooner than later, we're gonna design the signs similar to the ones that the tennis courts are designed in, green and white. Uh, to keep them park-like, uh, and without drawing too much attention while drawing attention. But I think, um, we decided that we were gonna wait, uh, and not wait on those signs and so that design is being done now.
That was one of my questions that I had written down is that uh, several meetings ago, there were people who volunteered to be on the sign committee. Is that still feasible, is it viable committee at this point?
Can I answer that?
Uh, yes, please.
Uh, because the mayor, the mayor, um, asked me to head that up and I have, um, one of, one of the people that volunteered got a, got ahold of us right away and said, yeah, I'm very interested in that. Um, and I think she's, without naming her, she's a great resource and I think that I I would really value her input, she knows a lot about signs and especially she's been a sign maker in the area. Um, however, she asked for a little bit of, of patience because she's tied up in some other personal things that, and then she'll, okay, when she's ready, um, I'm gonna put it out and see if we can get some more participants in it and then at that point we'll have some conversations and let the public know. Hey, let's, let's sit down, let's have a cup of coffee and let's talk about, you know, what do we want? Do we have time to do some kind of branding or identity book here for our signs and have more consistency, thank you.
All right. All right.
Yeah, all right.
I'm, uh, yeah, I just skipped over a few things or something that you're interested in talking about?
Oh, no, I mean, you had other things listed and you.
I.
I'm sorry, I was following down the list.
Yes, I'm sorry, so, I, staff administration, we also have elections approaching. Uh, so we have a main primary and we don't have anything on the ballot, that is for all us to know. Uh, in November general election, we've got three positions with expiring terms, Mayor Smith, Councilman Reed and, uh, and Councilor Sharon. Um, so those will be available to, uh, work through the city here soon. Um, we've been through multiple meetings over the last couple of weeks, it's been very, very busy. Um, council special meetings, town halls, planning commissions, uh, covert mediation meeting is something that we're working on, we're gonna end up in mediation for the covert that's on, uh, Gearhart Loop. Uh, talking about who is responsible for that, uh, covert that has, um, failed. Uh, that in our opinion is not the city of Gearhart's covert, the ones that are responsibility in order to install it or to maintain it. Um, but we're still having to go through this process. Um, we'll see how that ends up.
You lifted.
Did I?
As soon as they, as soon as they put gravel out, it was five yard. You guys bought it.
Yeah, and that's been going on for over twenty years. Um, we are gonna, uh, start getting back up on water conservation, uh, the season is coming. Uh, we have water, uh, conservation ideas for posting and trying to save on that. Uh, grants, nothing new to report except for the recreational immunity signs will be paid for with a five thousand dollar grant that Christine had, uh, written, who got it, so that's good news, she jumped right on that. And, uh, got that money. Mayor Perry Daniel, we talked about that and tentatively scheduled for the Gearhart Cleanup Day, it's April twentieth. Eight AM to eleven AM, but a lot more to report.
That's four twenty.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Well, I'll have to. I don't think we're celebrating that.
I do have a question, um, where are we at, getting more water rights, where is that?
That's coming up here this, uh, in this meeting here, just a little bit, but yes, we are moving forward.
Any other questions? All right, moving on. Going to visitors. Bench committee.
Okay, I have a report for the bench committee unless they'd like to start off with anything. I see that started.
No, we're waiting on you.
All right, so the Gearhart, I'm gonna rewrite off the synopsis here. Gearhart Bench Committee requested final approval and direction from the council on replacement of the new benches. And the confirmation of existing benches, locations additionally. The additionally, the committee seeks authorization for city staff to submit a permit application to Oregon Parks for both new and existing benches that are affected by the statutory vegetation line. Otherwise known as the SBL. As directed by Oregon Parks Guidelines, the provided maps highlighted six benches encompassing both three new and three existing. Actually, there's more than that. Um, within a specified red box area that require undergoing the permit process and approval by OPRD Real Estate Services. Without these permits, no new benches can be added and the current ones may have needed to be removed in that specific zone in front of the vegetation lines. The maps also detail all current planned bench locations, the committee urges the council to approve these locations, enabling the city staff to order new benches based on prior council decisions. Secure permits for those impacted by the SBL, and actually, we're gonna reverse that, secure permits first, then buy benches. And manage the restoration of existing benches.
Yeah.
Furthermore, the city will also request permits to relocate benches that were previously placed out but now out of destructive use due to growth of dunes. So this project with the maps that are on the pages, I'm sorry that I did not include the legend for these maps. But as you look at the maps, the yellow benches are new benches. The blue benches are existing benches. There is a box down below in those six benches, uh, on the lower end of the part, uh, the, the map, on the first map. The benches that are all the way up near the windward condos and the ones that are near the Pacific Way Trail will also need to be included, we found in the permitting process. So we went ahead and talked to OPRD multiple times, told them about our situation. They have told us to go through this process to, um, apply for these benches to be out there and to apply for the new bench locations. They seemed positive on the whole, uh, project, so after tonight, if the city council agrees that these new yellow benches out on the beach side are appropriate and you'd like us to move forward with them, we will continue to fill out the permit application for all of those benches and take this through a process that according to OPRD should not take very long. Then after we get that process finished and we have approval for moving the benches, then we will, uh, order the benches from Barco, who is one of the purveyors that we had had and I think Sharon helped us with. And, and I had made contact with the lady at Barco and we are talking. And I had made contact with the lady at Barco, and we are talking about the pricing again. And the availability for benches, things are looking good there. And so the next move after you folks approve, just through a consensus, we will submit these. Uh, requests for permit to move the benches. In this, it's not just putting new benches out and maintaining our old ones. Our first attempt is to go ahead and get these placed up on top of the dunes to move forward because of the accretion. And many of these benches do not have any views left over. So our first goal is to have the benches move forward, and then install new benches out there. The volunteers of the committee have come up with some proposals. For how that will be paid for through uh, donations for folks. And those look good, and those we would uh, go through, no ordinance necessary for anything like that, that's more of a policy or a procedure with the City of Gearhart. So as long as um. OPRD is happy with this, hopefully by next month, we'll be able to give a thumbs up to begin purchasing. The benches and get those started and put out. One of the items that we had to take care of with this is how much sand would we be moving, how would we install the benches? We provided them with all that information, so they could have it. It's going to need a little concrete out there, a little flattening out of some sands, not much moving. And they were pleased that it wasn't as much construction as what they initially thought. So that's what I have to report with staffs looking for is a consensus that we go ahead with the benches on the beach side.
Have you come up with a bulk price for these benches yet, for, per bench?
We're close, um, Letitia, I think her name is Letitia. Letitia, she's great, and um, it's, we get to go ahead, and when we go to order, that's when we get the pricing. But, but she did say that the pricing has not changed that much, not as much as she thought.
Okay.
Okay, so, question, so that's for the big bench, um, there. The more robot bench, that's what you're talking about for out there. And what are we going to do about these more in-town, where are we at with that?
That is something, again, that the city council needs to consider, if they approve all of these bench locations. These are all the yellow benches that are on that page one. We're estimating somewhere around fifteen thousand dollars to twenty thousand dollars for this project. Uh, if the council approves and wants to start placing benches around here, um, we can get started on that.
Right, but we, we won't be paying the bulk of the people who want the benches for themselves or their families to pay for that, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
And so we'll put the money aside, purchase the benches, and then the reverse.
Okay, can I ask you where the SBL is?
Yeah, I can show you. Christie, may I get um, may, may I get uh, the ability to share my screen? It'll take a little while.
On your laptop?
Yes, please.
Okay, you got to join the meeting first, then I'll let you in.
Copy that. All right, thank you, Christine. Can I say something while we're waiting for Christie to do this? There we got it. Seventeen easy steps, yes. All right, so here is. The beaches here. Let's show you our water lines and fire, I guess, if you're interested. So Gearhart, south part of Gearhart, north part of Gearhart Ocean. The state vegetation line is this line right here. That goes up to the top of the dunes. This state vegetation line that comes back, it comes into this area right here.
Chad, do you think that's approximately the Verde Beach Trail?
It's almost exactly the Verde Beach, almost, there's a few places where it was off of that.
Thanks a lot for that.
And the other thing that kind of takes this is the oceanfront building line, I won't get into that too much, but the oceanfront building line is tucked right up against all the houses here in Gearhart. And nothing can really be built beyond that into the dunes, other than sand fencing and some other repair work. So that's why this bench situation in front of this vegetation line and in front of the oceanfront building line is a bit of a permitting process.
Any other questions for Chad on this? Anyone who want to give us a motions?
I have, I have a comment.
Okay.
I see that uh. There's uh, two, four, five, there's five new benches from Leslie Miller Park down to the Ridge Bath. Right now, there's eighteen benches. From Leslie Miller Park, to the one across the street, eighteen.
Eighteen between there and there?
Eighteen between this one out here on the Ridge Bath, up to Leslie Miller Park. Eighteen, do we really need any more benches in Gearhart? If people want to have their families memorialized, let's take one of these parks. Put up a billboard, put a roof over the top of it, have them go and get a plaque, stick a bench in front of it. And have them go down to. The placemaker down here, white seeing achievement, and then give it to the city, and the Public Works Board is going to put it up. I don't think, I mean, most of these benches in Gearhart aren't even used. The other thing I'll have to say is the existing ones are out on the oceanfront. I think that the families whose names are on the benches should have to contribute six or seven hundred dollars a year for maintenance. Otherwise, the names come off. Why should we taxpayers have to go about maintaining the benches? That, that were put out there, that were paid for by the family, but they didn't pay the city, they paid the bench manufacturer.
Well.
And then they, and then those manufacturers, Jim Gilbaugh and, and Bill, when he wants to place the benches out.
Those benches, well, to answer your question, the, the city received over, I believe, twenty-eight. Twenty-eight.
Twenty-five or twenty-four.
Twenty-five people that called and asked if they could have a bench.
Then have them, have them put their names on that billboard, it's one of my parts.
Nobody's called to ask if they could have a plaque, if asked if they could have a bench.
Okay, let's take the bench there in front of it, and then put, put the names behind the bench.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, I mean, I've asked my cousins, you know, Tom McCall's family, the one that's down at the end of Seven Street there. If they would be willing to donate six hundred dollars a year to the City of Gearhart to maintain their bench, and they said absolutely. I think that we ought to, I think that as a council, I think that we need to, to make a, make a resolution or something like that. To request to people to maintain their own benches.
We're building that into the new bench um, application form. We're building a maintenance fee into that, wouldn't we set for you, what we set for you?
Yes, for uh, an annual fee.
We got three guys in the Public Works. There's all kinds of stuff that they need to do inside this city here, rather than go on down there with a weed whacker or something like that. Like, we're talking about liability, okay? Somebody goes down there, trips, falls down into the concrete armrest or something like that, cracks their head open. Because they tripped on the, on the dune grass.
Well, maybe.
All right, so just a minute, okay? Do you think that, you think that the three guys in this city, I mean, it would take them all summer long. To go down there, load the grass in front, in and around those benches and everything like that, pressure wash them, oil them, and to maintain them.
These benches don't need to be oiled.
Not even by the existing.
Well, we did, the city did receive uh, funding to maintain and repair.
I understand that, oh, that was a very generous, that was a very generous of, of a woman.
And the way that we had uh, talked about the policy, these benches, when we say annual maintenance, it's once a year that they will be cleaned. Just once a year, they're, they're not going to, Public Works is not going to go out there every three months and do it.
Every single one of these streets, every single one of these blue dots alone, this front right here, has got at least two benches. All these around here on the estuary, apart from the one in front of Alan's house, has got two benches of it, okay? All these here require them to, to get a vehicle with a pressure washer. Okay, and a water wagon or something like that down there, along with, you know, I say we, we charge for that and, and contract it out. I mean, have you guys even thought about doing that?
We've thought about very many things on this.
Okay, and, and, and have you, have you thought about what, what the cost is in order to maintain those? And how, how the three people over here at Public Works, with everything else that they have to do in this city? That they're going to be able to afford to do that on a yearly basis?
Pretty much.
God, I gotta, guess I gotta get a job with Public Works or not?
There you go. No, but, but thank you for your comment.
All right. I'm still waiting for a motion. If you want to go ahead with this.
Okay, I, I move that council approves authorization for city staff to submit a permit application to Oregon Parks for benches. On second.
Okay, is there any more discussion?
So. So if I'm hearing you correctly, you're, you're answering his question and saying, yes, you've had thought about that, and that's going to be part of the, when you, when you sign for a bench. You're going to be notified at that point that you will be required to maintain it, it's going to be maintained once a year.
Once a year.
And it doesn't have to be our Public Works guys, if we're just giving some money, then we could give this contract to somebody else, so we, sure, we can pay somebody else, okay?
Any other, I'm sorry, what?
I'm sorry, one other thing with, with recreational immunity being a problem, somebody trips over one of these benches, do we have any problems, Peter?
I mean, really for us to have a problem, there would need to be a dangerous condition. And we would need to be aware of the dangerous condition and do nothing. Um, and then. I just. I think that if, if you're asking me if that's what's keeping me up at night, it's not. Like, there are a lot of other things I would be worried about before we got to, like, uh, slip and fall close to a bench. Uh, if the bench had like. Was like warped, so it had spikes on it or something like that, and someone told us, and then we just didn't do anything about it, and then someone. Impaled themself on it, yeah, I would be pretty concerned about that, so I think that, I think. Maintenance and if we become aware of a problem, we need to demonstrate that we're responding to it.
So is there any way that we um. Because I, I get both sides of this, of this argument here. I mean, we can't continue to just stick benches anywhere and everywhere that, you know, that nothing's moving. Um, we have other issues, we're going to be, we, we might be, end up redesigning this area down here, benches might be an issue if we're putting them everywhere. Um, but yeah, on the other hand, we have a lot of people that have been on this list for a very long time, who have not been told no, and they have some expectations that I think at this point. I mean, have there been people on this?
The expectations, yes, the list has been old, and it's been there for a long time, over twelve or thirteen years now. But when we took the information from everybody, and we put a date on for the request, what their request was. And we told them if a bench came available, they would be in that line, and we would go down the order in which they. Uh, had requested it, and let's say we do a new park, we have two benches, we go to position two and three. And then we go ahead and offer them that opportunity, if they take it, great, if not, we go down to the next list. So that was the way that it was reported. Then we gave into, now that we have this list, we have a bench committee, it was to buy benches, and they get everybody on that list, one of their benches. Uh, or at least the opportunity to get a bench and to move forward replacing them around town, because there was over twenty people on that list. So they picked twenty or so spots that the benches would be a good placement, according to them, walking around town, and all have some, some nice spots. And so then we went from, okay, well, one at a time as they came available, to all the benches now.
So, I mean, I, to, to get to Preston's point, at what point do we say, okay. This is enough, we can't continue to do more benches in the future, what point do we say, okay, we, you know, we're going to do a sign and, and. And is it after this, have you guys discussed that, was there?
We've actually discussed that, because there are some towns on the east coast that did have to put more to buy them on their benches. They said, this bench, no more, and so, yes, the bench, many have thought about that as well. And although we have not discussed the, the number of new benches, we do want to accommodate the people who are on the list.
Right.
And the bench committee called those people, you know, some of them were on there like for twelve years, they were still interested in having a bench. And the ones that I talked to that didn't, that said, I'm taking off the list, is because they've moved, they don't live in Gearhart anymore. But, no, so I think almost of the twenty-five, and correct me if I'm wrong, about twenty still want a bench. It's, yeah.
You know, take a walk down the brown sea side. Is that what we want our oceanfront looking like? Is that what we want, you know, the city way looking like? Just walk down the brown seaside.
Well, I mean, I guess the alternative would be to call these people and say, no, you can't have a bench.
Or to put up a plaque, put up a billboard or whatever it is on one of the parks, put a bench in front of it, and they can have their name on the, on the, on the, on a roof.
Do you want to call Public Works?
I'll, I'll call them.
Oh, okay. Here's, here was my idea, so, so I, I had an alternative idea, kind of in keeping with what you're saying, actually. I said, why not, when we design whatever we're going to do for Centennial? Why not have, uh, and Boulder, Colorado has this, where I have a problem. Uh, tiles, handmade tiles, gorgeous. And you could have any inscription on that tile, any kind of decoration on the tile, and we could have a seating area. That is made, the back of the seating area is made of those tops, that was my suggestion.
That's fine.
You like it?
We did it, we did it in front of the fire department.
Yeah.
With the bricks.
Exactly, yeah.
You know? I mean, why pollute the city, why pollute the city with any more benches? Let's figure out how we can all get them in one spot, you know?
There's a couple of places around here, I walk this city all the time, almost every single day I walk this city, because I have a dog. There's a couple of places that I would just say to myself, boy, if I was tired. I would really like to be able to sit down and just rest for five minutes or ten minutes, wherever I am. And so there's a few places, Preston, that I would.
I can see down, Sharon, I can see down here, you know, where they extended the Ridge Bath.
Yes.
Okay, on the east side, I can see, I can see adding some benches there.
Yeah.
Okay, and I can see Northern Gun Club Road, right? Where people walk all the way down Cottage Avenue, and then they turn to go around.
Right.
Yeah, I can see, I can see those places there, but I can't see all these here on Pacific Way, and I sure can't see them out here on the dune front.
Well, for clarification, the ones on Pacific Way, some of those are in the tennis court area?
Uh, the purple that is in the map, yeah, are benches that exist. In the tennis courts, the red that's in the, uh, are benches that exist in Leslie Miller Park. The yellow are new, uh, are benches placed to be considered. Uh, there's a few of the purple that we'd like to replace as well, of course, and we'll work that project out.
What are the black ones?
The black ones are uh, park, uh, paving benches.
Oh, so, so the majority of the new benches that you're proposing, there's a few out there on the, out there on the ocean, which we don't even know that we'll be able to get, we have to get a permit, but I was. We have to get a permit, but I was, and then you have some that are clustered in the park, which is appropriate. You want to have them in the park. There's some in areas where we have not had them before, and, and legitimately, we do have an aging community here, a lot of retirees here, who have complained to us in the past, like, oh, we closed the bathrooms, they'd be places to stop. So I, I have, I, I would give you a second for this, and then we go forward. But yeah, I would say in the future, I would not want to increase the number of benches now. I would, Preston, on that. I would say, I have an alternative solution in the future. So I'll give you a second on your motion to approve the bench committee's request and direct staff to order the necessary benches applied to the park and proceed with existing bench restoration.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against?
No.
Okay. Passes. Thank you.
I give this one to you, you can talk.
Okay. Public communication written in oral. We have a letter from Deb, have thoughtful lists on owner's rep. We have a, he then did in, I think that's Dattius, D-A-T-T-Y-D-S, and that's asking us not to commit to...
Resolution.
A resolution. Thank you. I'm sorry, I lost the word joke for a second. Um, we also have action alert for running, walking, and biking, the SB fifteen seventy-six immunity bill that they have in the legislature. And the other one is a request by Recology who was attacked, um, what does they call it?
Cyber attack.
Cyber attack. And they're asking for a extension on their rate increase for this year, because they still have not recovered from the attack on their hardware, their infrastructure.
Yeah, their, their computer structure for their entire company.
Wow. And so, by consensus, Peter, or do we need a motion to extend their, their...
Rate review process.
Thank you. Rate review process.
I think a motion would probably be the safest, of course, take.
Okay. Does anyone want to give me a motion on extending their rate review process?
I'll give you a motion to extend Recology's request, to, to extend a request for rate review. I'll stand down.
Okay. Any discussion?
Does that gonna affect IU?
The rate request would only be against, or not against, but it would be the customers would have to pay more eventually, if that's what they called for.
Potentially for a rush pin as well, but it's been later.
Right. Okay. And any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, pass. Moving on. We have no one signed up for talking. We have no one who emailed in. So, oral public comment. Anyone wishing to address the city council concerning items of interest not on the agenda, they do so at this time. All remarks will be limited to five minutes per person. Requests to comment automatically must be submitted by email to thecityreporter@info@cityofgearhart.com no later than 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting. In-person attendees wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to the meeting.
I'd like to sign in. Late, sorry.
You're late. You didn't sign in.
I apologize, I'm a family emergency.
All right, Matt. I'll let you.
Okay. Was there anybody else?
No, nobody else signed up.
I would like to speak, but I just forgot to sign in. Well, Dave.
Okay, well.
We're good.
That's tough on me. You're sitting in the back of the class.
That's right.
All right, Shannon, go ahead. You got five minutes.
All right, thank you. Shannon Smith, seven seven four, Pacific Way. Nice town, Gear Hard. Couple things. One, I attended the seaside meeting last week, the two thousand fifty meeting they had, vision for two thousand fifty and plans for seaside. I, of course, love my tent. It was fascinating meeting. A hundred and some people were there, many, many tables facilitated by a consulting group. They talked about, again, things they surveyed the community for, key priorities, housing, economics, environment, there were several more. But each table discussed the different topics, gave the group ideas. Everybody participated that wanted to. Several council members were there. It was great. And I think it was a nice way to get open and sharing feedback, and people felt engaged in their city. So that's one. Number two, what I thought was cool about that meeting was they talked about culture and vision. How do we feel about our town? How do we want to have others feel when they come and see it? What would we like in twenty years that we don't have now? And I thought it was very forward-thinking. It had this nice sense of, we're, we're part of what we're gonna plan for our future of our city. So, just a suggestion that we attempt and try something like that here as well. And I know town halls may be that kind of forum, but this was a little bit more focused broadly. Number two, I continue to talk people around the area about the Estuary Research Reserve, all the way up to many state people now, as well as state lands, and getting more and more participation, which is great. In seaside, I talked to both Tia and Tom Hording, and several other people with the city that said, he was posted, we'd like to buy them more as well. In that meeting, I talked to also state lands folks about concerns about setbacks on building along our creek near Coxey, especially with our lovely sickus spruce trees of three hundred plus years old. So I brought another great hand up for you guys. That has the Aquatic Resources Special Concern information on the back about this ancient forest, and then the pictures on the front, give you again a picture of the barn taken in probably nineteen thirty-five, and then with the overlay of our same sickus spruce forest back here. And when I sent this to one state lands guy, he said, you know, much of those trees would have fallen down in that earthquake back in seventeen hundred. But he said, many of those trees now would have been fairly small, so they probably lasted, so we probably have four hundred year old trees. He said, the fact that they lasted all that time protected by the dune makes them absolutely unique. They're gonna look again at the wetland overlay, especially to where certain maps consider the high tide line for the highest tide for our creek. The maps, they have marking that are old. So I asked them, can we expedite, the new map's being done, and can we expedite particularly our section of creeks, since this is really special and at risk? And several folks I've talked to said, it's probably not a good idea to build there. Now, no official, but certainly, I again reiterated, it's a pretty challenging place to have homesites. There's many, many reasons to protect it. The new thing from state lands is they're rewriting many of their information, their rules and regulations, or I should say their rules, to, what do they call it? They said, to make everything objectively clear. So I said, okay, define objective. They said, well, we're gonna take it apart piece by piece. So they're looking for clarity in the language, clarity in how they try to offer that information, make it simple for the public, as well as objecting, whatever that is for the...
Forty plus.
For the rule. They've offered to stay in touch with us, the state lands person we have for our area, as we move to forestry, so we have a new person taking over. The gal I spoke with today is one of the policymakers for particularly weather's protection, the fill removal standards, and we talked at length about our special forest. So, we've got support from state lands to do more, to make sure it's preserved, and really here for the next hundred years. So, thank you all. Keep you updated as I get more about the Estuary Reserve. So thanks.
Thank you. Hey.
Never seen water screw up your hair.
The what? I was gonna ask.
Yeah.
Chad Robert Lee.
Robert Lee, as soon as I... Are you gonna speak, Robert?
Yes.
Okay. Just your name and your address, please, sir.
Six point seven, Robert Lee, six point seven eight, Gear Hard. And I apologize for not signing in, but if I'd known you were gonna speak about the benches, I probably would have stopped and signed in. But I'm sort of concurring with Preston general, although I hate to admit that. But if you walk down...
If you're talking about the benches, that's on our agenda, that is not a topic that is open for you to discuss. This is strictly anything that is not on the agenda. I'm sorry, Robert, but that's...
That's okay.
Okay? All right. Anybody else? All right. We're gonna move on from public communication to ordinances and resolutions, which we have none. And now we'll go to old business, the OLCC license renewal update. And Chad, are you going to give us a little read on this?
Sure. I'll summarize it for you, Mayor. So, last month, Councilor Dana asked a question that the staff could not answer. The question was on the renewals for a couple of the different folks that were applying for OLCC licensing. We contacted OLCC, talked about this issue, and they gave us the following response. And this was in regards to trade names that were one of the issue, the name that they have underneath their application versus what the business is named now. And then the other is about basically surrender or renew of the license. OLCC came back and told us that trade name changes wouldn't be something that necessarily holds up a renewal. Councilor Dana was asking if the trade name should be correct on that application process. We request that they inform us, this is OLCC, request that they inform us of the change so that we can update our records. I can, I can let renewals know to include a change of info packet with their renewal notification from Gear Hard Ocean Inn. As for the business that is closed, this was good times. They should inform us about surrendering their license, but often, we'll just let it lapse. So if you find a business is closed in your area, but it's still, this is on the license, is active, please reach out to your compliance division, ol@orgi.gov, to inform them, and they can go check out the location and take it from there. Staff is waiting for April first to confirm good times did in fact let the license lapse, then all is well. We should only take the compliance division route if it does not show that it was lapsed. So, the name change is, is going to happen eventually, and the compliance division, I don't believe, good times is re-upping the license, so that'll, that'll be a...
Thank you for looking into that.
Yeah, no, that's good. We, we didn't know the answer to that question, so it was a good exercise for us. And thank you, Kristy, for being here.
All right, so there's nothing to do on that?
Nothing to do.
All right, moving on to new business, budget committee appointments. I've been told the recommended way to do this is to get a motion to individually name an applicant, so we can appoint them to the budget committee. Each and everyone gets his motion. So, we have three positions, we have three applicants. Does someone give me a motion on Paulina Cochrane?
I'll give you a motion to appoint Paulina Cochrane. I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Paulina, you're on. Someone give me a motion for Jennifer Gray?
I'll give you a motion to appoint Jennifer Gray.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Jennifer. And a motion for Robert Lee?
I'll give you a motion to appoint Robert Lee. I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, everyone is appointed who has applied. Great job for applying, people. Thank you very much.
Applying people, yes.
Can't believe it's... That's, yeah, it's just three hours of meetings. All right, Red Cross proclamation. Will you read the synopsis, Chad?
Will you, sir? The city was contacted by Janay Pearson Motion, county volunteer to the American Red Cross Castings, to request that March twenty twenty-four, we declare American Red Cross Month, a form of proclamation was attached for consideration. And we actually could make a small little change to the proclamation on the sheet that you were handed in front of you, was to remove...
It was the name of her region right before the word today.
It was, it was like an artifact from a boilerplate that we removed, and just was naming her region in a, in a weird fashion, but the, the decoration is correct now.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm about to sound like a lawyer.
Good.
So, I, I, I read this, and, and maybe I didn't read it correctly. I read this to suggest that we were suggesting that people should donate to the Red Cross. And in the past, we have recognized, our proclamations have recognized organizations or issues, but have not included a, not included support of, per se, not, not included a suggestion to support those organizations. And so I just wanted to, to flag that. This, to me, read differently than other proclamations that we would normally process and, and do.
So would you encourage me to drop the line up, the last line of, now therefore, I encourage all citizens of Gear Hard to reach out and support, it's a humanitarian mission. Is that the line that makes you think they're asking for a donation?
Yeah. I, I read that, and then there's just, there's a lot there. This is just, I, I don't know if it's boilerplate that they created or what, it just, it, it's Gear Hard specific, sort of, but it's not. And, and it, it, in my mind, read like advocacy for that organization itself versus for a, a issue such as the donation of blood. So, I, I don't know. And again, maybe I've just been spending too much time in litigation. But yeah, this is a...
Okay, so if I drop that line, what about the issue of bringing religion into the city? Because in the era of our Lord...
Yeah.
Requires me to...
There's a, there's a lot, there are a lot of unusual things about, about this proclamation. And, and normally, I don't read pro, this is on me, because I review the packet, and I read a lot of stuff, but I don't usually read the proclamations. So, maybe we could just proclaim March is, is, is Red Cross Month and leave it at that.
Is that all right with the council?
Yes.
Yes.
Should we need a motion?
Uh...
You just have to proclaim it.
By motion? Okay, I don't, I'm gonna say that I proclaim the American Red Cross Month two thousand twenty-four is April. I'm gonna say that I proclaim the American Red Cross Month 2024 is April.
Is it April or March?
I believe it's supposed to be April, isn't it?
March.
March. Good, great, thank you, Preston. Okay, I proclaim that March is Red Cross. Okay? Thank you, everybody. Moving on. Request for an RFP approval, owner's representative, Chad?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The city of Gearhart is launching a project to explore the construction of a new public safety building to replace the outdated and sizeingly unsuitable 1958 fire station, aiming to serve both fire and police services more efficiently, effectively. The project emphasizes community engagement to select an appropriate location, consider the challenges of the current site and the necessity to involve public feedback in the decision-making process. Key project goals include replacing the old fire station structure to mitigate earthquake risks, removing hazardous materials, enhancing operational capacity and facilities for both fire and police departments, and addressing the need based on community growth and service demand. The project will involve hiring an owner's representative to oversee public engagement, develop conceptual plans, conduct a needs assessment, comply with state laws for buildings in tsunami zones and earthquake zones, and manage site evaluations. This role also includes organizing public meetings, developing a community engagement strategy, and finalizing the financial plan with extensive information shared through the city's website and social media. The initiative aims to create a modern, resilient public safety facility that ensures a long-term safety and will web, well-being of Gearhart's residents underpinned by those through the planning, community involvement, and expert advice. Your options are to approve the attached RFP, seeking the owner's representative services, or take another action. Staff, of course, would recommend, we had discussions about this proceeding with the RFP as the plan is. What our intention is, is that the RFP would go out, people would bid on that, and then the staff would bring back those bids for approval to the city council. There's options for us to do interviews if we need to. There have been a few changes made to the draft. I used the cities who's currently going through this process. I used their information as a template. They're currently using it, owner's representative. So in the first under introduction, and I'm sorry, I don't have my changes, Christie, I'm gonna need your help here, I think. I don't have the new version here in front of me.
Is this, is this it?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You have to retract.
Oh, we're going to the other draft that's on the table?
Yes. Yes, very minor changes remain. Christie, do you still have my notes?
I'm digging in my recycle bin. Would you like me to just read it aloud?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, in the introduction, Chad, you got third line down, it says, the project is approximately one-third of an acre portion of an acre parcel located on the west side of Pacific Way.
Yeah, sorry, that is in the north side. So this is the new one. Also in there, it said city hall instead of public safety building. So we changed that to say public safety building. We need to strike the site of the project is approximately one-third acre on the west side of Pacific Way downtown Gearhart.
Okay, so let's back up and can you take us just quickly page by page?
Yeah, let me grab my note here real quick. I'll be right back. So on page two, we need to strike the location information and public safety building is what would remain.
So on page number two was where you were removing city hall and putting in the public safety building.
Correct.
In the first paragraph.
That's in our back from the from the other piece, from what we used, seeing things in use.
I don't have a city hall on my paper.
Right, so we need to remove the new year's?
Let me rephrase this.
Okay.
On page two, we had city hall instead of public safety building. We changed it to public safety.
Okay, so you're talking then.
The new draft.
You got the draft.
So we're gonna put the new draft.
Okay, so the new draft is the draft we're talking about, correct? Okay, thank you.
I have questions about
Okay.
Some stuff that it's still in the new draft. But I can see.
Okay.
Page by page.
What page are you on?
Page three.
Okay, so we're good with page two?
So page three, the introduction, the site of the project is an approximate one-third acre portion on an acre parcel located blah blah to the north side of downtown Gearhart, obviously, not the west side.
Yeah, we need to strike that entire line.
Oh, you're gonna take it out?
Yes, because we do not have a location selected.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask. Because farther down, it says potential locations for a new public safety building. Then farther down, it says the exact location for the new public safety building is not been determined. And then I'm like, read those three things, and I'm like.
Yeah, so take the first one out, please. So we'll remove that.
Any other change, Chad?
There's one. On page four. The, under the top of the page, it says project needs and goals. The last bullet point in that section has been added to show that enhancing the accessibility, ensuring compliance with OSHA and FPA, the local calls to prioritize safety, and regulatory adherence. I don't see that.
It's on the new draft, it's on the board.
Okay, that last bullet point was added. And that was more incorporate some of the requirements that we think. The next change is page seven. Under the proposers' representation, we added an S to the word understands. Very minor change. Ready? After that, page fourteen is the last change. Under A, it now says general project expectations. We took out the word management. There was another section afterwards that gets far into the management, so that section is removed. That word was removed. That were the only changes that were made. One test. So, thank you. This, yes. So the city staff feels strongly about moving forward with going after this RFP. We think that it's the best way to handle the public safety discussion, ensuring that transparency and participation is needed. These folks that do this work have they have a lot of time and experience in working with cities. Primarily cities of this size, larger cities will usually handle these sorts of things in-house. But smaller cities struggle with a lot of these type of projects. And this person would help us keep that on track and be a third party to assist us through the process. So we would like to come back to you next month with those proposals for approval if we receive them. It's a big deal.
How is this happening?
This will be advertised in trades, websites, our blog, of course, and then we'll also be contacting as many people as we can and asking them to take a look at the blog that are within that business. There are some local groups, there's a couple of local groups that are interested in this already, they've been watching.
Because they've gotta get back to us by the end of this month.
It's gonna be close, but yeah. We anticipate.
Will you put this on the blog?
Yeah, it'll be on our website, we'll make it, we'll make sure that we put it on the blog. I'm not sure that we've done that in the past, but I'd say we're gonna.
I mean, are we gonna give the public a chance to comment on this at all?
Well, they've had the chance since everything's come out on the agenda, the changes that we made were very minor and not major, so I was comfortable making them. And they will get a chance again, well, we're gonna have a chance again next month to potentially go through those RFPs and move forward with selecting one of these to choose. I know that's gonna be at the next month's public meeting, the city council meeting.
So can they comment on it at the next firehouse meeting, or?
Probably will be all right with me. You know, that could be part of the topics we're talking about because in order to move ahead, we have to have this kind of person onboard. They're gonna help facilitate the information and the everything else that we're asking them to do. All right. Anyone want to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the publishing of the RFP seeking owner's representation service to oversee the public safety building.
That's for us.
Second. That's good.
Okay, can I get a second? Any discussion?
Just one quick question. I'd like a lethal opinion, and do any of the changes that we made tonight constitute something that we should wait on?
I thought they were pretty minor changes. I think depending on the feedback that you get from the public going forward, you know, and we can continue to tweak things in minor ways if we get applications from facilitators going forward. So I'm not, I didn't hear anything tonight that made me uncomfortable.
Okay, and just so, just so everybody's clear what we're talking about here, so we post the RFP, we give them a deadline, we look and see what proposals we receive. They get a time when they can ask us questions or ask for some clarification. And then eventually, after the interview and presentation, it still comes back to city council at the next meeting. It's not a, it's not a done deal. We have the final say on, on which.
Correct, because we'll probably have to come to you with and ask for money out of the building reserve funds to accomplish it as well. This is going to be under a hundred thousand dollars, which is threshold for budgeting and for the way we handle it.
And you don't, if you don't like the applicant pool that you get, or if you, if the if the proposals are something that doesn't resonate with you, it's not binding that you would hire anyone. I mean, you would, you could, you could absolutely say no. We would rather, you know, take another course of action. What we had, feedback that we had heard from the public was a desire to hear from the entire Gearhart community, not just Gearhart voters. And so that people would, you know, people that aren't domiciled in Gearhart, but still very much care about Gearhart, that they want to be heard too, and I think this was an effort in order to do that while getting as good an information as we can. So one of the thoughts was that a skilled facilitator would be better able to gather that information and distill it for you as a council to make sure that all of those different voices were kind of considered as part of the process. So that's kind of what this, where this came out of.
That's, that's it?
That's it?
You've got a question?
Thank you, Peter.
And a second?
Do we add a motion?
Yeah, yeah, we have it.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm looking around something. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? No, it's not that. Moving on. Chad, will you read the synopsis for the RFP for water rights?
I will, and your RFP has not been changed. The one that's attached to this synopsis is the one that we're presenting to you. Gearhart is advancing its initiative for water supply independence by seeking additional water rights, aiming to reduce reliance on warrants and for peak demand support in July or October. The city engaged HGS Geosciences regarding the feasibility of water rights with the Oregon Water Resources Department to explore acquiring more water resources. Prompted by recent population growth straining the existing system, despite the challenges of summer demand, the study explored transferring rights within the North Coast Basin as a viable option. Initial discussions with the Oregon Water Resources Division revealed complexities in acquiring new rights, partly due to the water masters unfamiliarity with the region. Nevertheless, Gearhart has gathered enough data to pursue more water rights and is now planning to request council approval for a proposal solicitation aiming to fund the project with water reserve funds for increased supply capacity and dependence. Your options are to motion to approve the publishing of the attached RFP water rights project or take another action. This is again the same scenario where we would come back to the city council with proposals and your permission to go forward with one of those proposals, y'all asking for money from the reserve fund, water reserve fund in particular. Any questions?
I have a question for Peter on this RFP. Peter, I don't see where there's an indication that they have to have us in the queue with water right, I mean, Oregon Water Resource Board before the September or October deadline for when they're changing the rules. Is there any way we can include that so they know when they get this, that they have to at least get us in line with the approval process?
Yeah, we could, we could add that.
Where would that be added? Because I would like to go ahead and get this passed, but I would like to know.
I think that what you could do is make a motion to pass this with the direction to staff to add that language, and then Chad and I can take a look. I wanna, there's some recent litigation, I'm sure you're aware of that, Mayor, kind of around these issues, and I would, I'd want to take a quick look at those pleadings too. And hopefully that would help inform exactly how we describe that language in there. But I think we could pass it tonight with the instruction that that timeline information be added. And if folks that do this work indicate that that's some sort of barrier to them competing for the work, then, then we could always bring it back next month and have a further discussion. But I'm confident that tomorrow or Friday, we would be able to distill that language down and then add it to this contract, if that's your direction.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the publishing of the attached RFP for the water rights project with the added caveat that we have the verbiage for meeting the deadline before ORWD changes the rules in the fall. Is that good enough?
Yes. Fixed goalpost rule, we need to be in before they change.
Okay. We have a second, is there any discussion? I have discussion. Peter?
Yeah.
I'd like to know how come the water master for the state of Oregon over eighteen years isn't familiar with this?
I think the particular water master knew. And was.
For eighteen years, I mean, the water, the Oregon water. For eighteen years, I mean, the water, the, the Oregon Water Department has realized that we, you know, that we're being hamstrung.
And one of the new folks that does work at WRD, OWRD is, and they're new and they're, they're up in that group, is familiar with Gearhart because they assisted Gearhart in, in the water rights as well.
So they go, that, you had a motion well for us.
I think so, I think so. And then also to answer your question there, Carrie, is the people that I've been talking to, there's very few, you know, water-mollwing groups that are out there, they are aware of that information. I think putting this in here is very wise, um, but their goal was to get moving on this.
Right.
To get around that.
But it's just something I noticed in my long. We can make sure that everybody knew that we need to make this deadline, yes.
Right, and what I've heard, it's somewhat anecdotally, but I have no reason to believe that it isn't true, is that, um, the limitation on our water was not necessarily based on the water, but rather a compromise with our water provider who didn't want us to have our own water. And now that, now that water provider is saying you better get your own water. So I would hope that when the state looks at that, they would understand that, um, we need the water.
Right. Thank you. Alright, so we got a motion and a second, any other discussion? I'd like to vote please, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Uh, any against? Thank you very much. Let's get that water flowing. Alright. Peter, you're up next because Chad's gonna read it about setting city precedent, and I understand you're prepared to lead the discussion.
Yeah, so I think that I got the question of how does the city create precedent? Um, and then how much deference are, are different people, um, given as they interpret code and, and other things? And I'm prepared to talk about both. Uh, and I'm gonna start though with, um, the issue of deference. And the, the answer is you as a city council, as elected city council members, are entitled to vast deference in your interpretation of your code. And I'll, I'll give you an example of that. When we were litigating our short-term rental, there was an argument made by the petitioner's lawyer that said that residential meant the main residence, or I would refer to it as domicile. Um, and because in our R1 neighborhood, um, that this person had pulled all of where all the people's property taxes went, and a majority of them went to an address other than, uh, Gearhart PO Box. Uh, and so was arguing that those weren't residences. And fortunately for us, and I am very grateful for our former mayor, Whittup, who during the proceedings on the record said, "I interpret residence to mean the type of res- the, the, the type of living unit" in that the R1 residential is a detached, single-family home on a 10,000 square foot lot. So when, when it got time for, uh, our turn to do our pleadings, I said residential doesn't mean whether it's your domicile or primary home, it's the, the type of home and the character of the neighborhood. So like the density of the neighborhood, all those things, and, and Luba said, "Yeah." Now, if, if we had said something that was like clearly on its face wrong, that would be when you're not, not entitled to, um, to deference and in interpretation of your code. Um, and so you guys have a whole lot of latitude. I always ask that people kind of explain kind of their reasoning. Um, that helps me with the pleadings. Uh, your planning commission is entitled to a bit of deference, but far less than you are. Uh, they are, you know, they are members of the community, the, they are appointed, uh, for that purpose. They get a little bit of deference, but nothing like the city council because the city council is the legislative body of the city. We, the staff, are not entitled to any deference, which is why if I say that I interpret something in some manner, I ask that you as a city council, if you agree, you know, please indicate that on the record. Um, I recently, very recently, made the argument to Luba, uh, it was a minor element of a case, but made the argument that if, um, if staff was delegated with the authority to make a determination, that they should be entitled to deference because through that delegation, they received the, uh, they received, you know, some of that from the legislative body. Um, Luba said, "No, we won the case anyway." Uh, but it, as of today, uh, even if it's delegated from council to staff, there's not, that Luba's not going to give you that level of deference. The, uh, the plaintiff in that case has appealed it to the Court of Appeals. I'm gonna make the same argument there, so if things change, then, um, I'll let you know. But again, that's why it's really important that, that you as a city council, particularly if we know something's going to be a legal issue, that, that you do what, you know, Mayor Whittup did. Uh, it's possible that others on the city council don't agree with that interpretation. Um, and certainly can say that and say what their interpretation is, and then it's just what a majority of you as a city council say. Um, so that's an example of why we kind of process these things in the way that we do. If, if it's, if something has clear meaning in the code, then it, it's clear and objective meaning in the code, then it's less important to make those findings. If it's an ambu- uh, ambiguous term, like an example of that would be like the Gearhart character. Uh, I feel like I have an idea about what people mean when they talk about the Gearhart character. But if that were a, um, if that were an element of an application or something that, you know, like in a conditional use, um, we would want you guys to go on the record and basically say what elements make that, whatever that application is, in that sort of thing. I once represented a jurisdiction and in order to get a bonus floor for an apartment building, the standard was compelling architecture, um, which seems like really subjective. But, um, because that was a conditional to use versus, um, it, it, it doesn't, it's something that could be like a, a bonus, doesn't necessarily need to be clear and objective. But we, I did ask them if they found that the architecture to be compelling to explain why. Um, and my recollection is they did not find that architecture to be compelling, so we didn't even have to worry about it. Um, the other way that we create precedent is through decisions. So if you approve something over and over again, and, and it, it's best not to use, this would be outside of like a land use context. Um, because with, with land use, because every piece of dirt is different, there might be factors that make it so, um, you know, that just, and I'll go back to that compelling architecture. Um, what was compelling architecture in the early 1960s would not have been compelling architecture in the early 90s in all likelihood because taste change and, and what people want changes. And then it kind of comes, could come full circle again where, uh, what was super compelling in the 90s might not be compelling anymore. So with, with land use things, uh, there's less concern about precedent. Where we need to be careful with precedent is, let's say somebody has a leak in their water. And they can prove that they had a leak in the water and that as soon as they became aware of it, and hopefully our new water meters would catch it. But as soon as they became aware, shut off the water, repaired the pipe, and, you know, appealed that to the city council. Um, and if like twenty times in a row, you're like, "Yeah, as soon as they got alerted that this water was happening, they shut it off, brought in a plumber, fixed it, we're all good." If, if in each of those instances you said, "Those are the elements where we would, um, we would waive, uh, you know, 50% of their bill or waive whatever the water waste was as compared to their average." If on like the 51st thing and the circumstances were identical and you said, "No", that's where we might have a problem. Because where we have a problem is through selective enforcement. So the, the idea is that we, we treat everybody equally to the extent that we can, recognizing that not all circumstances are going to be identical and there might be reasons that people would decide to do one thing or another. Um, if you're going against what you've traditionally done, what I would ask is that you explain why you're doing it. And one is because that is more fair to the applicant. Um, but, but secondly, if somebody, if someone brings up selective enforcement, then you'd say, "No, these are, this is why the circumstances are different. They became aware of the leak, they didn't immediately shut the water off. They went, didn't contact the city to shut it off. They waited 48 hours for the plumber to arrive. We believe X amount of water was lost as a result of that. That's why we don't think circumstances that would merit, um, reducing the bill by the 50% or whatever it is that you, that you do traditionally." So those are, in my mind, precedent and, and kind of deference fit hand in hand. Uh, because the, the goal with both is to avoid litigation. And, uh, and, um, also to be transparent to the public and so that they would understand why you're doing what you're doing in one instance, but, but maybe not in another. Um, as far as can staff set precedent, we really can't. Uh, we need you to tell us, like if, if your priority is speeding, then you would say during your council goals, you know, police officers, we've seen a lot of speeding in, um, whatever area. We, the radar camera little unit that we've got demonstrates that people are regularly going like 20 miles an hour for the speed limit. We hope that that would be an enforcement priority for our police going forward. And then at some point in the future, if they're no longer speeding or if there's some other priority that's more important than that, then hopefully the council would, you know, in, in the goals, kind of say, "Hey, this is, this is our priority." Um, traditionally fireworks on the Fourth of July and some of the other activity that happens on the Fourth of July has not per se been a, um, council priority, and it is now. And so we're gonna pick, we're gonna figure out what additional steps we can take, whether it's police officers from other jurisdictions, whether it's asking Oregon State Troopers, um, whether it's sending, uh, letters to certain high schools in the Portland metro area and saying, "Hey, guess what? Um, we're, we're gonna be citing people for whether it's minor in possession or, or whatever it is." You know, publicizing that in advance so that people know this is how we expect you to act when you're in the city of Gearhart. And if you don't act in that manner, we're bringing in resources so that we can, um, we can perhaps better deal with it than has been dealt with in the past. But again, that, that comes out of, um, from you, the council. Sometimes staff has to make a decision out of necessity, um, out of, because it's urgent and we don't have time or we're a long ways from a, from a council meeting. Um, most of the time when that happens, staff picks up the phone and gives, gives me a call. Um, heads up, kind of, "What do you think?" And, um, you know, I do my best, uh, in order to kind of do what I do with you, which is talk through legal risk and, and help those staffers make a decision. So, um, but, so that's kind of precedent generally. And then what, what we don't do, uh, and then any specific questions? Because this precedent's pretty, pretty open-ended. So if you have anything in particular, I'd be happy to try and answer those questions.
Anyone have a question? Thank you, Peter, that was very informative. Sorry, this spider's been coming down from the ceiling. You're not gonna get him.
I was here for you there, I was worried about the spider, I was like, I'll shake it.
I put him outside, but, um, he dropped right off. Yeah. Alright. Council concerns. Let's start with you, Rita.
Well, I want to know what the status of our zip code is, Mr. Chad. And give me something, an update.
I don't have that. Actually, I do, I just. Ms. Christie, if you would mind, that's right.
Yes, of course. It's still in the hands of rearmatage, I think that's how you say his last name. He's the field representative of Senator Wyden. And he checked in with me a couple of months ago, but there, there's just no movement on it. But he was supposed to be, um, putting a little, uh, a little reminder in the, in the district manager's, um, yeah, that's, that's about as much as he could tell me. Part of the problem though was the postmaster changes in Seaside. That was the big, the big hangup was none of the emails and none of the updates were going anywhere. He, he wasn't even in the office, he was on a leave of absence, and we didn't know that for a long time. So then he had a replacement come in and I don't even know if they've been apprised of the situation, but that's something that I could follow up on for the next meeting.
Thank you so much, Christie.
You're welcome.
Kristen? I have none. Sharon?
I have none.
Ben?
Um, yeah, I have something that I would like us to talk about, perhaps on the next meeting. But one of the things that's come up, some citizens have come up to me saying that they would like us to do a better job of communicating with them changes that we make. And I completely agree with that. If we're gonna change the rules and expect our citizens to comply with them, we need, we need to know clearly what the rules are when we change them. And, um, I talked a little bit about, with Chad, about how we could perhaps improve our publi- publication of changes, and I think we should put that on the agenda. And along with that, I would like to see us, some other, I know we have long meetings, but we've been having a lot of meetings also, which is very time-consuming for us. Some other, um, cities around, one of the things that I've learned is that some other cities around, they tie their sessions, their work sessions into, um, each city council meeting. So everybody shows up whatever time we determine, half an hour, 45 minutes early. They have a discussion and we get that all on the way, and then the meetings go much faster. But yet still the public who are interested in hearing all of this back and forth, um, can be there for that. I would like to put that on the agenda, that we have a discussion about that or a session or whatever it is appropriate.
And that's it?
That is it from me.
Okay. I have nothing. I'll take a motion for adjournment.
I'll give you a motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.